Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, could we please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. This is the March 11th meeting of the Clinton School Committee. I'd like to start with a motion to approve the bills.
So moved.
You're second?
I'll second.
Thank you, motion being made and seconded. Any discussion on the bills? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you, unanimous. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held on February 25th?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded. Is there any discussion on those minutes? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Charles?
Good evening. This past Friday, the CHS Student Council put in a fantastic effort in putting on the spring blood drive. March 8th brought a fantastic 130 appointments by the morning and an unprecedented number of community member walk-ins throughout the day. Through the tireless work of the Student Council members, 87 units of blood were collected by that afternoon, as Clinton claims another win in helping save more than 200 lives with the donations going to future causes. A big thank you to all of the CPS staff, students, and community members that helped us make the drive a great success. Over the weekend, CHS hosted the March SAT tests, allowing a variety of our own classmen and students from around the area to crunch the numbers and show off their literacy. It was the first SAT test for many, and hopefully not the last, as all underclassmen and students have so far registered for their courses next year. A huge congratulations to the school, high school's co-ed cheer team, who received a score of 89.8 in the state tournament over the weekend. For the first time in school history, the cheer team qualified for the national tournament. Spring sports will begin on Monday, March 18th, and all students intending on participating in a sport must attend a spring sports meeting at the CHS auditorium at 6:30 PM. The St. Patrick's Day Parade, which will include performances by the CHS band, has been rescheduled and will still be performed at a later date. Tuesday, March 12th, will bring the Naval Educational Awareness and Opportunities Night and will be held at 6:00 PM in the high school cafeteria for US Navy officers to discuss the college benefits and job opportunities, as well as officer programs for students and parents. The first robotics team will be competing this weekend in Bedford, New Hampshire. Team 126 will join teams from all across New England in beating this year's deep space game. Good luck to them. Safereds Driving Academy is going to be providing another driving course for students at CHS after school in the coming weeks. This was very successful last year, and we are proud to invite all students looking to gain experience driving on the road to attaining a license. There will be an early release this Friday, and an all-star volleyball competition is to be held during the last period of the day. And all students in CHS will get to watch the student winners of the March Madness Tournament face off against a team of CHS staff members turned into professional athletes. Good luck to both teams. The senior class of 2019 will be holding their senior hop from 7:00 to 10:00 PM at the Town Hall next Saturday, March 23rd. CHS seniors are invited to buy their tickets all through this week for themselves and one high school's guest. And the dance should be a fun finale for the graduating class. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Anything from the PTA tonight?
Good evening. We're bringing bingo back to the PTA, and we'll be holding a bingo night Saturday, March 30th at Elks. Doors open at 6:30 PM and games begin at 7:00 PM. Tickets are $20 each. People can get in touch with anyone from our board, and we will post when we will be available at other times through social media. This is an adult-only event, and our next meeting is this Thursday, March 14th.
Can I get them at the door, or do you have to?
They can get them at the door, too. Yes, sorry, I should have put that, too. But...
They might sell Elks, though, because it's a pretty popular event.
It is, yeah. Can I go to CPAC?
By all means.
Thank you. Okay, so last Thursday, I'm sorry, last Tuesday, we held our yearly Basic Rights Night with a guest speaker from the Federation for Children with Special Needs. We had a good turnout, and we would like to thank Mr. Rulo and Mike from IT for their technical help in getting the room set up for our guest speaker. And we would also like to thank Kathy Buchanan and Loretta Braverman for helping with specifics regarding our different schools and our internal procedures. And at our next meeting, which is April 2nd, we will be having a guest speaker. His name is Brian Kowalski. He, it will be an open discussion about autism. He opened up a Resource Center. He's from a Resource Center in Bolton called Family Perspectives, and it's applied behavioral ana- ana- oh, sorry, ABA. And so he will be talking about what families can do with the beginning stages of autism, and also if someone has been in the depths of it for a while, things like that.
When was that?
I'm sorry, what?
When was that?
April 2nd.
Okay, what time?
At 6:30 at CES Library.
Great.
That's it.
Any questions for Kevin? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments?
CTA, CTA.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Anything from the CTA tonight? I apologize. Do we have any public comments?
Can I make maybe a quick suggestion? Michelle, do you want to, do you want to come up as public comment and just sort of share, just, just because that way we might be, you're on the agenda a little later if we need to take some action to approve anything, but...
Sure, sure, thank you.
Hello, I'm Michelle, I'm the head cheerleading coach. So this past weekend, we had our state tournament at Tantasco Regional High School, and we qualified for the first time for the national tournament, scoring an 89.8. We ended up fourth in the state in the small co-ed division. So they've made huge strides as a team over the past three years that I've been here, but really over the last three months as well. And it's just a huge recognition for them to get to this point and for the school's support, so...
So I've learned a lot about cheerleading in the last week and a half.
It's changed a lot since you were here.
Yeah. So, yeah. So the, so by earning a score greater than 88, right? That's a cutoff. They've, they've earned the, basically granted permission by our state organization to go to one of the national, like, invitationals.
Yep.
And what we thought was going to be a real tight turnaround to try to get them to go on a, to one of these national competitions this weekend, seems like it was too tight because it was full.
Yep.
So do you have, I think you threw out a couple of other ones. Do you know what we're?
Yeah, I think after talking, I met with the parents tonight, after talking with the parents and the team, too. I think May 4th and 5th is in Virginia Beach. That's the final one of the school year. But registration's still open, they have plenty of room.
And I saw your cost proposal for it look like it'd be very reasonable.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so what I'll probably do is later in the agenda item, under CHS Cheerleaders, we might look to take some sort of vote, kind of approving their out-of-state trip to nationals, just to kind of approve that as a, as a trip. And then, you know, we'll kind of go from there. And so you definitely think that, so Virginia Beach is the one you're most likely to go onto?
Yeah, yeah. We're on a waiting list right now for March 23rd, but I don't see it happening.
That's another tight turnaround.
Yeah, and it's, it's also senior hop, so seniors don't want to miss that. They're torn, and a couple of the people on the team have confirmation and things like that, so... Wouldn't really be that great.
Please extend our thanks and congratulations to the team on all their success.
Will do, thank you very much.
It was great, I went, you know, we went down and saw, uh, it was last night, right? It feels like it was three days ago. It was last night, and they did a great job, and it's amazing. It's amazing the way they, some of the things they do. I couldn't make that cheerleading squad.
Is that your first one you've seen, first competition?
No, I went last year to the, it was the first one this year.
Yeah.
I went last year to, see, in Worcester State, so...
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
So actually, this weekend, we got invited to attend the New England Tournament as well. That is on Saturday, March 16th at Worcester State, so we will be attending that tournament now that we won't be at state.
Oh, good, so you're going to be able to go to New England's?
Yeah, so we'll represent there, too.
Awesome.
Yeah. So that's another big stride for them. I'm proud of them, they're great.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You want me to introduce the first?
Sure.
So we got the first team, you guys can come over here. So this is the, I know we've done this in the past, but I think we, I don't know if we did it last year. I think this is the first year we've done it.
Yeah, we did it a couple of years ago.
Right.
Coincidentally, I was also there then, so I don't know if I was, I just missed out the past years, but I was, I was here when I was a freshman.
Yeah, and, and Charles can speak to it more, but I know that from what I've been told about the chairman's award, they basically, they get judged on explaining, describing what the, what the competition is for that year and how knowledgeable you are about your robot and like your strategy and things like that. And we just figured it might make sense as kind of a practice for what they're going to have to do to come and, you know, then kind of, at the same time, inform us about what FIRST is like this year. I've been down there a couple of times, not as much as I was able to last year, but I think it'd be good for all of us to, to kind of see what the competition is this year and, and what the robot is, so, you know, let, let you guys take it away.
Absolutely, so Ed is a great volunteer that we really, we really appreciate your support throughout the, the years that you've been with us. And as he said, we do go to our competitions and we get to present to a panel of judges about who we are as a team. So before that, we want to actually explain kind of what the game is this year, because we don't explain it to the judges, so we want to have you guys kind of familiar with what we do. So this year, it's, as you might have heard, it's deep space. So that means it's kind of a twist on space travel and everything like that. So the game is kind of themed on a lunar, lunar landing kind of site. And so three teams on each side kind of compete against each other to use game elements like this. This is a ball, and there's a bigger, something that we couldn't get a hold of. It's at our facilities with our drive team right now, actually. It's a hatch panel that has Velcro on it. And the use of these, those two elements get us points for competing against other teams in filling up a rocket. So there are two rockets on either side, and then there's a cargo ship. The hatch panels with, so the discs are called hatch panels, sorry. They have Velcro on them, and they keep these balls inside compartments. So we have to use both elements together in order to get points successfully. And as always, it's a competition of speed and timing and gaining more points above the other teams to kind of rank up and go across our championships, which you'll hear about later. And of course, we're going this weekend, so again, thank you for your support. And so we'll just get right into the, what we would do for presenting to the panel of judges.
Sure.
We are Galeforce. We're seniors passing on skills.
We're sophomores finding our futures.
We're freshmen learning what FIRST is really about.
Being a founding team, we've sustained ourselves for 28 years, maintaining a model for returning and rookie teams. Galeforce started as a small team in 1992 with only seven determined students. They worked together, defeating the odds and winning the FIRST championship. Since then, we make it a priority to show just how much a small team can really do. We've grown ourselves from the original seven students to more than 65 students, having more than 800 students go through the program in total.
Our alumni go on to pursue STEM careers at companies such as Polytech, MIT, Boeing, Raytheon, and Google, just to name a few. Many of our alumni have returned to our team, six of whom are mentoring our team currently. Countless other Galeforce graduates have branched out to mentor teams across the nation and volunteer year-round at FIRST events.
Colleen Shaver piloted a Galeforce bot in 1996, and today she is the director of the Robot Resource Center at Worcester Polytechnic Institute. In 2000, WPI offered a full scholarship to Tim Baird, another driver on Team 126, and her impact pulled him back to our events for decades, making him one of the most recognizable volunteers, referees, and game announcers at our local competitions. Colleen and Tim have even returned to the high school for a Saturday speaker series, which invites a different alumni every week to speak to the team and answer questions about their own stories. We inspire our alumni.
And they inspire us to do our own part in the FIRST community. Engaging with rookie and veteran teams has always been a team priority, whether it's through Skyping international teams or informative workshops for local teams. We strive to forge and keep strong connections within the FIRST community. In recent years, Galeforce has been able to, has been able to form several FIRST robotics teams, both locally and internationally, including FRC teams in New England and Australia and FTC teams all across the nation, all the way to India. We offer all kinds of different support to the teams we form and reach out to, whether it's financial, technical, mentoring, or just video calling to check in. And what town is complete without a Lego League, though? Ours isn't, so we've ramped it up and integrated it with our STEM curriculum in our schools. We also sponsor a trip to our FIRST competition of the season to our middle school students, where they get to watch all the local teams in action. These have led to the institution, a project "Lead the Way," and a STEAM for Girls Club, filled with future FIRST students.
These kids also get to see our facilities, which are in a real factory full of volunteer engineers in a professional work environment, and more recently, at our high school. In 2019, we moved our operations to the high school from NiPro in order to get a more hands-on experience with real engineering equipment. Despite the move, our relationship with our main sponsor has become even stronger this year, as the team decided to centralize our activities at a more accessible location to the students. They helped us move heavy-duty technology and industrial equipment to the high school, including a CNC router, bridgeboard, and lathe. Members of Team 126 get to work with them and NiPro employees immediately after school, but we'd be a disgrace to gracious professionalism if we didn't share. All of the equipment that Galeforce has brought to the high school this year is being implemented into a variety of tech, engineering, and woodshop classes. Now, students, whether on Galeforce or not, reap the benefits of the FIRST program.
But FIRST is just about their build season. Galeforce knows this and wants to take the program beyond the robots and the six weeks. Every year in the fall, we invite groups from all around the area to join Team 126 in a bridge-building competition, what we have dubbed MiniFIRST. We're broken up into randomly assigned groups, plus a mentor, and given our own kit of wooden parts with a time limit of one week. At the end of the week, the groups come together to see whose bridge built holds the most weight. But we're not alone. Team 126 is joined by youth groups from the community, including a local Cub Scouts troop, multiple STEAM for Girls teams, and even families. And the night of the competition brings the entire community together with volunteer judges, local reporters, engaged parents, and students who haven't even joined Galeforce yet. In addition to first-place scores, several other teams are recognized with awards chosen by the judges, recognizing aspects like team spirit, bridge aesthetic, and even deceptive design. The bridge-building competition serves as a kickstarter to the season of FIRST for Clinton and gets the whole community involved in the exciting months to come.
We are more than just our schools, though. Team 126 has its own website, where teens all over the world can see our archives and daily updates. The site also has a page of resources for teens to benefit, benefit from. We utilize social media, too, such as Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, to keep the community and the world updated daily with the year-round happenings of Team 126. Our supporters of all kinds are part of the Galeforce family, receiving our student-built newsletter every week. Beyond the Build Season, we take to the community, annually selling Christmas trees with the Lions Club, hosting a summer fun run, and volunteering to clean up our Town on Earth Day. The robot is a part of the family, too, so it comes along with us to summer camps, our town's Fall Festival, local boys' and girls' clubs, and events across the school district. Our community is who we are.
Team 126 makes it a priority to be a STEM and FIRST force in the, in our town's community and beyond.
We've been changing the culture around us to provide...
Teach.
And inspire.
All generations in our community.
By working together as one. Thank you.
Well done, very well done.
So, thank you, thank you very much. This year, we'd like to commemorate the career of a longtime supporter for Team 126. We would like to present this shirt, this shirt, in special dedication to a man that has not only provided us with unlimited fan spirit and the facilities of this very school, but also a continuous reminder that we, as a team, represent the creativity, tenacity, and community that is Clinton High School. Thank you, Mr. Hastings, for all that you've done.
Great, great job, guys. Charles, real quick, what, um, how many, how many kids are on the team this year? Do you know?
So we started out the team with 65 students, and we've only dwindled out to about 30 or so, I want to say. It always depends on who wants to go to the competitions and who can actually make it. We don't, we don't make any rules as to whether someone can go to one competition or another other than Detroit. So if a student can't make it to the, our FIRST competition, they're still able to go to the next competition to support us and still be part of the team.
Got you, okay. All right, great, thank you. Great job, guys.
You get to follow that, Dr. Meyer.
Yep. Well, I made a PowerPoint, so... All right. So I just want to review, this is what we're calling Budget Version A. So it's very, there's, the bottom line figure is pretty similar to the preliminary budget we presented in January. There's a few updates, tweaks, and I'll just kind of walk you through some of these, so you can kind of see, see where we stand right now. So I just kind of, in your packet, I gave you kind of the handouts, but I always want to, you know, bring it back to, what's our mission statement? So think about why do we do our budget? We're trying to make sure that we're able to provide students with rigorous, engaging, academically challenging educational opportunities, developing academic and social skills while recognizing individual differences, and partnering with the community, basically doing all the great things that, trying to support all the great things that the students just talked about, right? So our vision stated, we want to be a high-performing school system where students develop as lifelong learners, healthy, able to work collaboratively, think critically to solve complex problems, overcome adversity, and effectively utilize technology. Our students will be prepared to connect with our local community as well as, as well as be responsible, knowledgeable, and productive members of our global society. And we've got three core values, academic achievement, which we'll give us, we'll talk a little bit about some of those tonight, safety and wellness, and be part of the global community. And those were all the areas of the strategic plan that kind of drives the local program, drives a lot of our work right now. So Budget Version A, it's just like the other budgets, based on, basically our initial input from our administrators and teachers, our current student needs, which is one that we kind of reviewed and made some adjustments on for this, a strategic plan, our district's goals, and known and assumed contractual increases. So that's another part that's changed, kind of from the preliminary to Version A, is just looking at as more and more, like, assumed increases become known increases as we get, as we understand like what, what a special ed tuition's going to be for the next year, we can put in an actual instead of a placeholder, those types of things. So this is a chart, it shows the preliminary. So if you look at the general fund, that's our total operating expenditures. Sorry, that's our general fund, which comes from the local contribution, Chapter 70. Here's our total operating expenditures. So you can see, it's really only, it's about a $10,000 change, is about all we really amounted to. But a lot went into that, to try to even so that we were at least going down. We didn't want our budget to go up over the preliminary budget, but we had some things we had to add in, so we tried to find corresponding places to get it down. So you can see, what this would amount to is a 5.37% increase to the general fund. We are spending less circuit breaker this year. It's based on the actuals that we receive. It's slightly more in school choice, not a lot. There's a minor change here, but that's just reflecting, I said, actual contractual figures. And so our total operating expenditures increase would be a 4.66. There are no, this does not have any warrant articles in the past years, except it would be a warrant article for a capital plan. There are no capital improvements in this. Those are being done by the director of facilities through a plan. So Chapter 70, so the governor's budget came out, and it showed our increases for Chapter 70. So when we talk about the general fund, the general fund is made up of kind of two things. It's made up of your local contribution, which comes from your tax base. It's also made up of Chapter 70, which is educate, the state educational aid. So if you look in FY '18 to FY '19, okay, this was how much our Chapter 70 increased. It increased by $200,000, or 1.64%, which means overall, we got a 3% increase last year, right? But the town had to increase their contribution by 4.68%, their actual local contribution, because Chapter 70 only went up 1.64. So the town's actual tax base has to absorb kind of more of the burden when your Chapter 70 is that low. However, in the governor's budget this year, our Chapter 70 went up to $13,186,850, which was an increase of $777,000, or, or 6.26%. So to get the 5.37% increase that this budget has right now in Budget Version A, it's asking for less of an increase from the town, from their, from their local contribution this year than they gave us last year, okay? Still an increase, I'm not saying I'm asking for less money, but it's relatively, it's less of an increase than they gave us last year to still result in this larger because of that amount, okay? So where that will, you know, obviously, we'll need to start presenting to the FinCom, we'll need to start working with, you know, see what the other town requests are. But I feel like, in the grand scheme of things, even though this says it's a 5.37%, when you break it down with this large Chapter 70 increase, I think it's a reasonable request when you look at, when you compare basically what the town was able to contribute locally last year and what they'd be able to, you know, similar increase for this year. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's unreasonable, but I think obviously we need to work with the FinCom and see what the other, you know, one piece of the puzzle, and we're going to see how it all fits together.
Steve?
Yeah?
When, I know you said that's the governor's preliminary. When do you usually get the?
It'll go through a while, because then they'll do, you know, like then the House will do one, the Senate will do one, they'll do a joint one. I'd say typically, the, traditionally, I'd say, the governor's budget has usually been low.
Right.
And then it adds on as they go through. I wouldn't anticipate, if I were going to guess, I'm going to guess our figure's going to probably stay the same. What I could see happening is different legislatures, as you go through the process, legislators trying to advocate for more money for the districts that didn't receive large increases, okay? Because, so more of the, like they would call it, like the minimum per pupil increase. So I could see that being something that legislatures argue for, depending on how different schools in their area benefited.
Thanks.
So some increases, why did it, what did we do to increase in Budget Version A? We added salaries, updated salaries to reflect staffing changes. So whether that's retirements that have become confirmed, or it's people might have moved up halfway through the year in the teacher contract, they can move up in their education. We added three additional IAs that have all become necessary through just needing to support individual students. We added a NECC Partner Program. So NECC is the New England Center for Children, and we are working, partnering with them to really build out our ABA programs in the elementary school. So the NECC Partner Program is one that, it's probably their most, most intensive, most supportive program, where literally, it's basically one of their classroom teachers that comes in and works with our instructional assistants. It's, it's almost like having, it's almost like what would have to traditionally probably be a lot of out-of-district placements are going to be able to be serviced locally, which is better for the student, better for everyone, because we can kind of try to keep them in their hometown with their, with their friends and that kind of stuff. So looking to add the NECC, we added the NECC Partner Program in here. We moved some items to purchase in, that we thought we might be able to purchase in this year. So what are some of the reductions that we had? We were to make some adjustments to special education transportation as we went through that, and special education tuition. And that's just basically looking at our actuals, our year-to-date actuals versus what we had budgeted last year. We were trending lower than we had, we had budgeted. We adjusted the sick leave buyback. If you remember, we were able to pay a lot of the buyback to be budgeted for this year at the end of last year. So basically, using the money that was budgeted for sick leave buyback this year to basically pay some of the debts we have for next year. So that's, we're okay doing that, because remember, those are existing debts. We're not talking about, we're not talking about people who are retiring this year. These are people who retired in the past years, because it's like a three-year, three-year window to pay it out. And we moved some other requests to FY '19. So what would we move to FY '19? So these are things we took out of the preliminary budget. So technology, we took about $36,500 out of the technology budget, but we had a little bit of money left in one of the, in last year's textbook and technology warrants. but we had a little bit of money left in one of the, in last year's textbook and technology warrants, and we have some money in the technology line of the general fund that we were able to basically, um, pre-purchase some, not pre-purchase, but purchase that stuff now, so we can get it, and get it in classrooms now. Some of the things like document cameras, we're gonna be able to order those and get them into the, into the hands of the teachers sooner. Athletic uniforms, there's about $15,000 budget for uniforms and equipment, there's some equipment in there, in the general fund for next year, that we're looking to be able to purchase this year. And one of the reasons we can do that is, um, basically, our athletics is, is well under budget right now, from what we did last year. I think, um, it's been a good job of, I think, I think in his first year, his, uh, our athletic director's been conservative with his spending, and now we're to the point where we're saying, hey, you got, it's this in your budget, get this stuff for next year. Sick leave buyback, uh, that's when we reduced the preliminary budget by $129,840. And that's money that we would, those are existing debts that we would still have to pay, um, but we would pay them out of the FY19. We had budgeted in FY19 about $180,000, I think it was. So we would, we'd be using, uh, 129 of that line item. So, these ones are all basically things we would move to this year's budget, and we're gonna be able to cover them right now in the existing line items over there, okay? This one, special education van, uh, we had looked at, in our, the preliminary budget included purchasing another van to add another sped run. We'd like to try to buy that now, because if you remember, when we bought it last time, it took a while to actually deliver, get inspected, do all that kind of stuff. If we can order that now, uh, we can hopefully try to get it on the road as soon as possible. The, this is one that would be, you know, we would want kind of a school committee blessing on that one, because we would be, right now, we have this, we are at least $30,000 under in our special ed transportation. However, uh, the special ed van would go under the, uh, like, a purchase of equipment. So it's kind of a major, it's an account, major accountability. And then the other one, CHS weight room and some PE equipment, there's, this is a request by the high school, um, physical education teachers, and we do have some money left in our current budget under, um, under general kind of instructional equipment, uh, that we would be able to, uh, to use to purchase this, these requests early. So, these were all things that we looked at, our current FY19 budget, trying to get an idea of exactly how it's tracking right now, and these are all expenses we feel we could, we could do now.
Are you looking for a motion right now to authorize the transfer for the equipment transfer, the, um, the van transportation?
If, if that, that's the pleasure of the board.
Would anyone like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to transfer, uh, the sum of $30,000 from the general fund, uh, from transportation, to, to, for the purchase of the special ed van?
So moved.
Second?
I, I'll second it, um, but.
Questions?
Questions?
Discussion.
Uh, do, Steve, do we have, so we've had this van for like a year now, right, roughly? A special ed van?
We gotta go a little over, no, I can't even remember now.
More than a year, because.
I'd say it's about 14, 15 months.
It was like February, yeah.
Can we estimate with the kids that are using the van, like, what that cost would have been?
Yeah, Karen does spreadsheet all the time, which, we know exactly what like, the daily rate we were paying like van pool.
Right.
So we know exactly what it was costing us.
Right.
And then we had done, she's done a lot of work, trying to even work with the town and make sure we're trying to account for all the costs, like insurance and the driver's salary and gasoline and, you know, that kind of stuff. And to try to make sure that we're, that it's, that it's profitable, and so far, it.
Some of the other runs that, for the new van, we've been pulling out some runs to get some estimates on that, if it'd be worth it for some of the other ones, which it can be estimated.
So has, has it already paid for itself after one year, or does it look like it's gonna be like a couple of years before it, it pays for itself?
In terms of paying for itself, like savings of $30,000.
Right.
It was like a year and a half.
It's probably like a year and a half, I think.
Which is still like really good, that's, it's a really good ROI.
You know, I, I think we did, we did like five, he did like the three or five year savings, and it was, it's pretty, it was pretty good, so.
Okay, yeah.
And then what I like about it, I mean, I, you know, we don't have to go crazy and get, you know, a fleet of 20 of them, but I do like having, I think if we're gonna have one, you should at least have two, right? Because now, um, if something does happen to one.
Right.
We have the ability to like, go send help, you know what I mean?
So that leads me to my question then, does that need to have that, and forgive me, I, the, the special license?
7D license.
7D?
Yeah, I think, in order for it to really be profitable, we'd have to have the 7D. Now, we can still use it, we did get clarification, we can use a 7D plate to transport students, um, on like short field trips, they said. But, the, the only catch is, the driver can't just, the driver has to have a 7D license, right? So, if you don't have, uh, it can't just be, you know, unless you go get your 7D license, you can't just hop in the front and start driving. But we could use it, so if we had two vans, and we needed to take, uh, the drive team up to the first early on one day, we might be able to do that, but we'd have to have our drivers still do it, so.
I see, okay.
Or someone would have to.
So that answers a previous question that, that someone here on the board had, that it theoretically, it could be used for these small trips, but the, the dri, the, the 70 licensed driver has to be the one taking, it can't be a coach, it can't be an advisor, it's, okay.
They have a 7D.
Right, right.
They have a 7D.
It can.
It can if they have a 7D license.
Okay.
It's not allowed to get paid, um, specifically for, they can't get paid for driving and for.
Sure.
Like coaching at the same time, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, all those in favor?
All right, thank you for that. So I just wanted to go by account to update you on Version A, and just kind of maybe remind you of some of the things that were in there. So district leadership administration, um, there's only an increase of 0.58%, it's about $3,700, just looking at the contractual increases, increased dues, those types of things. Instructional services, there's kind of a large increase, 8.33%. Remember, that includes, that would include our, um, contractual increases to basically our, our instructional staff, our teachers. We did add, remember, if you remember from the preliminary budget, we had added a new position at CES, uh, ELL teacher. We've also, there are now six additional sped IAs. Three more than, than we had in last, six more than we had in last year's budget, okay? But actually, all of them are pretty much here right now, because they're ones we've had to, we've had to hire to support, um, to support students. And increased, um, special ed contracted services, that's the, um, the partner classroom we talked about. For other school services, this is more like, um, this is where athletics is, this is where nursing is. So we have our transportation contractual increase, we had a, this year we do have a CNA, uh, hired to support a student, and, um, it just wasn't in last year's budget, it was something that came out, so it's now in this year's budget, so we just had to re-code it. So that's kind of why that, that increase is there. There still is a new sport placeholder, uh, in the athletic budget. The operations and maintenance, that was a large increase, um, that's adding some additional, additional custodian to CES, adding a groundskeeper and increasing some of the repairs and maintenance to more of the actual totals. Most of that line, most of that account, the 4,000 account, um, most of that was done with the Director of Facilities. Okay, so, and none of that has been, um, you know, that stuff that we can revisit once we start realizing what our final target number is and how that fits together with the town.
Steve, didn't we, didn't we add one last year? I know they, we, there were three new custodians hired, but two were replacements, wasn't one a new position last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we added one more, um, unfortunately this year, due to, we actually had, um, one custodian who's been out almost a year, so really, that, we haven't really reaped the benefits of that.
I'm just looking at it, I think you kind of hit on it, is Russ is still in the process of putting that department together. And, you know, it's not, and I'm gonna tell you something you don't already know, but it's not the salary, it is, is also the benefit, you know, the town has to curve. If he, if he hires two new people, and then when he puts that department together, find out there's a custodian, say at the, you know, the library that he could use somewhere else, we're kind of.
And he's got, he's been trying to put all that together, so this is based on, you know, he's got his kind of plan for the town and that department, and then this is what they're taking basically the, the school aspect of it and putting it in. So we did try to sit down and look at that. And there are a couple of things that might not be, they might not play out as directly as this, the way it's worded. It's kind of worded this way to be, um, to make sense and make it so it's kind of clear like what sort of the school share, what sort of the town.
No, I, I just.
We still need to report it for, um, educational spending, but I think it would be a little more fluid, kind of like.
Right, I'd say, rather wait till he puts that together, and then, hate to hire two people and then have to lay off from another department, so.
These are things that he's, yeah, these are things that he has, um, he's requested. So we met with him, and we said, this is all, that pretty much represents his plan for the facilities department.
Thanks.
Fixed charges, so there was a, a large decrease in that one now. And if you remember, in the preliminary budget, there was a large increase in it, um, because, uh, we had to, we were just looking at the number of people that would be retiring and figuring out what we owed previous retirees, and we had put that number in there. Based on some of the, uh, now that we've kind of cut some more official retirement letters in, we can adjust to that cost to a better, more of a, um, a true number, and that made it very, very high. And that's why we said we need to move some of this into FY19 and pay off some of these previous debts from previous years now, because it's just, it's getting way too big, and it's not really, uh, it's gonna, you know, allow us to do some of those other things. The acquisition of fixed assets of $7,000, this is, we removed the van, so you gotta, thank you for making that motion to move it to the FY19 budget. And then programs with other schools, the out of district tuition actuals are down about 9% to about $407,000. And I think it's important to note, that while we might have increased some of the spending for contractual services and some instructional assistance, particularly at the elementary school, strengthen our, our AVA programs, that's part of why you're seeing kind of a decrease here, because, um, you know, some of those students, you know, the, for example, the partner classroom that we're looking to add for next year, has, um, they kind of tell you, your break even point is three. If you have three kids in that class, uh, it's usually more cost effective to have that class in your own school than it is to send three kids out of district. Well, right now, based on our student population, we think we'll have seven in that class. So it's one of those things that's a, um, can be a substantial savings, so. So I just want to make sure we clarify that, and I also think, it's not just about money too, and I think that's another important thing to understand is, I just think in general, it's better to let students go to school, in school, in their town, and not, you know, be on a van going to some other, other place with those types of things. So, you know, I think it's, it's, it's a benefit for, for everyone. So capital improvements, not included in this budget, and you've seen kind of some of those things. I know he's updated some of these, uh, these aren't his most current figures, I haven't changed these, but I know he still is in that ballpark of, about thinking that his initial request, at least the finance committee's gonna be about a million dollars for, um, capital improvements, and then we'll back into, we'll prioritize them and back into whatever, whatever they think there might be. You know, I do think that there might be some, you know, some of the money that they get from the, um, uh, the landfill project. I believe that there's been some movement recently that makes maybe some, potentially some of that available, or even a town, might have to happen at town meeting this year to maybe make that more available for capital projects. So I don't think that, you know, a million dollars is necessarily something that it's, there's no way it's ever gonna happen, because if that landfill money is able to be used for some of those projects, you know, Russ is putting together kind of a comprehensive list, so it's not just us, but it's also, you know, the, the, the needs that the fire station has, and the needs that the senior center has, and those types of things, to try to really, um, use the money to basically try to bring everything kind of up to where it needs to be.
So Steve, will he plan on sharing a prioritized list? Cause I'm sure it's gonna be mixed with school stuff and town stuff. It just, I'd be curious to know like where some of the school stuff is on, on his, his overall list of priorities.
He's been trying to work with, uh, Mike on the town side to try to get a sense of what they're expecting from him in terms of like how to present the warrant.
Yeah.
I'll try to make sure as he's doing that, we can, we can get that update, so we can kind of see. I know what you're saying, like, it's kind of, is it, you know, if, if he requests $2 million and they say you only get one.
Right, yeah, like if the middle school, like, we all agree, middle school needs a lot of work, but like, you know, I don't know what other projects he's looking at. I mean, how do I know that's not fourth or fifth on his, you know, on his, on his list?
And I think that's what we've said all along, that's the beauty of this position.
Yeah.
Is that instead of it just being us sitting there going, we need a roof, and someone else saying we need, uh, you know, windows or whatever, we have someone who can look at all of them and say, like you just said, this is a top priority.
Right.
Whatever we have for funds, we gotta do this first, this second, this third, so. And I do think the roof is, is up there.
I missed, I missed that. I get it now, it took me a while.
So that's pretty much all I really had for the, for an update right now. As I said, it doesn't seem like the, the final number was only about $10,000 different, but there's a whole lot of individual line items that have fluctuated and some changes. So I think, you know, Karen and I have gone through it, I think that this is a budget right now that would allow us to, to do what we want to do, to meet the needs of our students, and, um, keep moving forward. So the, you know, we'll keep it, I, I would just recommend that we kind of keep it like this until we have an opportunity to get preliminary feedback from the, uh, the FinCom, and then we can see what they're thinking, because, um, you know, the, and, and we gotta obviously, like you said, keep an eye on what happens to our chapter, that Chapter 70.
Right.
I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna, you know, be drastically reduced or anything like that. I think they're, cause even, even the way they're presenting the, the, uh, the laws and the different changes that they're proposing, this would be, you know, year one, a kind of a phase in, as it should be to get us back up to where we need to be, so. Anyway, any other questions?
Question? Thank you.
And you have the, um, you should have the, the line by line in there, so if you wanna look at any of the, um, any of the, uh, specific things, and if you have any other specific questions on them, you can, you can let me know. But like I said, we've, really the major changes were the ones I highlighted, and everything else is just kind of a contractual. You know, we put a 2% increase in, and we found that it was gonna be a 1.8, so we changed it to 1.8.
As you go through this, if you come up with any questions that, uh, aren't answered tonight, then Karen, we would just reserve that you'd be around for next time. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're starting to reach the point where, uh, you know, some level of budget update's gonna be on pretty much every school committee between now and the, uh, public hearing, so. So academic achievement, if we move on to the, um, the strategic plan update. We have academic achievement as our strategic goal. CPS will engage all students in education's challenging, research-based, and focus on student achievement while progressing them to graduation and preparing them for a successful future. So, the first goal there, develop and implement best practices for instruction to support all learners. And the second goal, align and enhance curriculum with the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. I think, um, both of those are, you know, the timeline's ongoing, but I think those are ongoing. I mean, those are very, when you look at those, I almost feel like those two goals, they're very broad, but they're essentially the, the essence of our work, right? Is to try, as, as educational leaders, is to try to make sure we're working on that. So, you know, we've done, uh, I think we've done a lot of, um, this work this year through our professional development days, and same thing on this, this Friday. So this Friday, we have the half day on, on, uh, March 15th, and the focus on that's gonna be, uh, kind of a combination. It's gonna be, it's gonna be curriculum work, it's also gonna do some building-based, um, building-based work. So they're gonna do, you know, brief faculty meetings, kind of address some, some needs within the building, and then they'll break into more of the curriculum, curriculum groups, so. I think we've made a lot of, in terms of the, um, curriculum, I think we've done, come a long way with, um, in terms of, you know, getting our, uh, curriculum maps revised, particularly in the, you know, I'd say K through 8, really, we've made a ton of, ton of strides this year. Like I always put the caveat in there, I think 9 through 12 was kind of a little bit ahead anyway in that area, because they've kind of done it, done some of those, that work for, for NIASC and those types of things in, in the, previously. The, um, you know, the wind block, I think we've got, you know, we've, uh, we've added a lot to the wind block in terms of interventions, and even some, some of the enrichment activities. I know that, um, you know, we've got Read 180, um, reading intervention in place, we've got Do the Math math intervention in place. Both of those are research-based interventions. We have, um, some enrichments going on. And some of the specials do some of the enrichment, enrichments down at the, uh, uh, elementary school, at the middle school. I know that they're getting ready for their third round of win, I think, coming up. And they're going to have, um, there was like a coding class that's going to run and, um, the project lead the way runs right now during that block and, yeah. Yeah, newspaper. So we're trying to get, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunities in there. Um, even the other day, I was at, um, I was in, um, Christine Zentraus', uh, class at the, uh, during the wind block. And she had her project lead the way, um, uh, group in there. And they were just totally engaged in that curriculum and they're making these designing toys. And ultimately, it's like, they make them, they, they have to sketch them, they make them out of plastic blocks and they have to glue them and make them out of wooden blocks. And then eventually they sketch them up again and the goal is to 3D print them. So they had, you know, kind of goes through that whole design process. But while she's teaching them, because those kids are so engaged in working on their projects, she's got other kids from the wind block who are coming in and using like the green screen in her, in her room, um, which is kind of like the, the makerspace area over there. And they're working on doing their, they're filming their announcements for the week and doing all that kind of stuff, yeah. So it's really, it's really, uh, it's really neat to see some of the stuff that they're able to, to be engaged in and, and do over there right now. So I think it's, uh, it's going well. I mean, I think we're still looking at, um, I think this, you know, this week, um, at the, there's a curriculum and instruction committee meeting on Wednesday. And I know one of the things we're going to start talking about is really trying to look at, um, next year and looking at what tweaks we might need to make to schedules or things like that. Um, I know at the middle school, we tried to get some feedback from the staff about what they'd like to see for schedule changes based off the changes we made for this year that we could look at for next year. Um, and we might even try to see if we could separate that, uh, right now, fifth and sixth have the same wind block. If we could get those to different times, we'd be able to kind of double the access to some of those, some of those programs. So, uh, we're looking at some ways to, to do some of that, but we'll kind of have those discussions, uh, ongoing. And really the last one, uh, last kind of one they have here is the demonstrate student growth on standardized test. Uh, not limited to MCAS, SATs, increased enrollment, advanced coursework. Um, the main thing I know, I know they did, we did have the, um, SAT prep classes going on at the high school recently that they were, um, they tried to get them between seasons kind of and run some, uh, run some prep classes at night in, in preparation for the, the last test, I think that was just last weekend or something, right? So, uh, I know they've been, they were working on that. But I think, you know, I think overall, there has just been, um, more of a, more of a focus on looking at student data, trying to look at what we need, how we can, what, who needs interventions and how we can provide that support to try to make sure we're progressing everyone. And I think that, you know, I don't really like, I'm not really a big fan about goals that focus on improving test scores because I feel like that shouldn't be your goal. That should be just kind of a, a byproduct of, of doing good things. But, you know, I think that, um, you know, I think hopefully we'll, we'll start to see that, so. I don't know, I feel like I could talk for like four hours about all the stuff we do. This, like I said, this is like, I feel like this is the essence of our job. But, um, so I don't know if you have any specific questions on this or?
I was going to bring it up under new business, but I do want to thank you and the, you know, large team that you brought to, um, to the professional development recently. I, I just, I thought it was a terrific day, um, with, um, you know, a lot of engaging speakers and the commissioner of education in Massachusetts and some terrific workshops. And, and to see, um, other school districts and such a large team from Clinton coming together. And because the, the problems are so common and, and the, the learning curve is, uh, I, I think universal for educators. And, uh, I was just so proud to be, uh, a, a part of the Clinton Public Schools in, in that regard. And so, so thank you for that initiative.
No, I think that was great. I mean, that was, um, so there was a, there was a professional development day at Neshoba on, um, March, what day is it, eighth? Yeah. And, uh, so what we, yeah, that's right. Mine's will be three weeks ago right now, but, um, so the, what we actually did was we did a, um, we had a team of people. It was basically our assistant principals and our, like, MCAST department chairs. And we did a learning walk at the middle school. I want to say it was February twenty-eighth, the day that we needed to get that learning walk in, so there was no two hour delay, anyway. The, we had the learning walk on the twenty-eighth. And so that team, we were able to get into classrooms, we were able to look for evidence, we were able to kind of see what we were seeing and, and have some discussions about, you know, uh, student engagement and looking at really, you know, what's students feeling like an engaged learner and just like a compliant learner and those types of things. And then we took that same team, basically a week later, to the, um, to Neshoba for the, uh, professional development over there. And I think it was just, it was great to just kind of see the two, right? Cause we could, we could get in the classrooms, we could gather data, we could have some discussion about it. And then now we could go kind of try to get inspired about what do we want this to look like now? And I think it was just, it was a great, uh, it was a, it was a, it was a great day. And I did feel, it, it was nice to have kind of a, a team there, you know? So I wish, uh, you know, I guess in, in hindsight, I wish I could have brought more people, but there were already enough, enough subs. All right, so that's pretty much the, that's the budget, that's the academic achievement. So we have the fire station on here, I know that.
So can we take the agenda out of order?
Yes.
Because.
Yeah, we have Michelle's.
Okay, well, by all means.
No, cause I, I feel bad for her, I don't even know her, but I feel bad for her. I would like to make a motion, we just flip, you know.
Second, any discussion on taking the agenda out of order so that we can move the cheerleader discussion up? All those in favor? Thank you.
Feel bad for us. I'm going to bore you with it more in a minute.
So we have, um, so we do have a, uh, student travel policy, policy JJA, um, that basically says late night or overnight travel must have the prior approval of the school committee. Um, initial approval by the school committee is required before they can do fundraising. They should consider the educational value of the trip, all that kind of stuff. So it does say final approval not be granted until all preparations of the trip have been include, uh, completed, included not limited to logistical details. The school committee requires that final approval be sought no less than thirty days prior to the scheduled trip date. So when I first put this on the agenda, I thought we were going to have to, um, you know, kind of rush one through here a little bit because it was such a last minute thing. It looks like if it's going to be May, uh, we should be okay. Uh, we don't have the final details right now, we can probably get an update for the final details. Hopefully by the next school committee meeting, we can just get something in, in writing. Does that seem, like in like two weeks, do you think you'd kind of know?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, um, so I guess the question is, I don't know if you're, you want to give it some, if you're comfortable giving it like a preliminary approval, pending final details or something like that, just so we can, we can move forward and that way we've brought it to you?
Sure. So we can entertain a motion to, uh, give an initial approval to the cheerleading squad of CHS, pursuant to, uh, final details and subject to compliance with our own policy.
Yep.
I want to make the motion, I don't know if I can remember all of it.
You say, I'll, I'll make that motion. So moved.
Whatever that was.
I didn't hear what you said.
I'm good with it.
What did you say?
I said, I want to make the motion, but I don't think I can remember everything that Joel, that Joel said, but, so, so moved.
So do we have a line item in the athletic budget that helps support the trip? Or is it, they have to do all their own fundraising?
So we'll have to figure that out when we get the final cost. Um, I do think, if you remember this year, we didn't budget anything, um, for athletics to come from the athletic revolving account. And we did make deposits to athletic revolving, mostly from gate receipts. And a lot of those gate receipts are from football games in which the cheerleaders are a part of those events. So I do think that there's, um, some money that we're going to be able to use to help support them. Um, and I think that that's where we got to look at kind of the final cost and, and, you know, the, the essentials of the trip and the luxuries of the trip. And we'll kind of see what they might need to fundraise for and what we, um, what we can, what we can support them with.
So the national competition doesn't contribute?
No, they get, yeah.
Itself, you have to.
Yeah, it did go, yeah. So, um, so I guess in that, in that sense, it's similar to, kind of like when first goes to nationals, you know, like they, they, but they, they know they're going, so they pay, they fundraise the whole year. This was something that was more of a, uh, a, a good achievement. But I did, I did say that if we, if we anticipate being, being this good in the future, we need to maybe fundraise a little in advance and, and, and plan accordingly. But I think that, uh, you know, I think that, you know, given, given how this went, I think we, we'd be able to, um, probably mostly from athletic revolving um, or some of the other, um, places that we might be able to, um, the, I know we had like the scholarship and enrichment foundation meeting. We brought it up to them, they, they mentioned they might be able to, uh, help out a little bit from the enrichment foundation, the enrichment fund, those types of things. So I think we'll be able to piece it together for this year. And then I think, um, we'll figure out what the, what the fund, fundraising portion might look like. And then I think just probably moving forward, we'll want to try to, you know, now that we've encountered this, we'll probably want to kind of come up with more, some written guidelines on, you know, maybe what, kind of when we're, when we're supporting going to the nationals and what we're going to, or what we, what we'll support of it and those types of things, so.
Yeah, no, I, I think that would be, uh, prudent for everyone and for all of the teams as the athletic department continues to see great and growing successes.
But I think this year, you know, it's, uh, it's an achievement that the girls, oh, not the girls, the team had. And, uh, and I think that it would be, um, you know, I definitely want to, want to support them and, and, and get recognized for that. And I think that that's, you know, and success helps breed success and, you know, now people will, will want to come cheer, so.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? So moved.
All right. So, I think you, you should be good. And if we can just try to get the, once you know the registration and get the final details, we'll try to get them to them and, and, uh, get sort of like a final approval of it and according to the policy, okay?
Okay.
All right.
You're certainly welcome to stay, but we won't be offended.
Yeah, you're, you're also welcome to leave if you would like.
Thank you very much.
All right. So the fire station discussion?
Yes.
Uh, so we did have, is that our last meeting?
I think so.
Man, I, I tell you, I, my sense of time is just gone right now.
No electricity, remember?
Yeah, electricity meeting. Uh, we had the, uh, presentation from, um, DRA about the STEM feasibility study. They presented, um, a few options. This is the kind of hot off the press book that, uh, they're still working on putting copies together for. And I think now it's kind of, they've kind of streamlined it down to three options. And option one was the, uh.
Fourteen is the cost.
Oh, it's fourteen the cost of all of them? I think if you go to the, I think on forty.
Forty-six.
Yeah, forty, if you do forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, that gives you like a one-page snapshot of each, each one. Yeah. So, uh, you know, really the, the, the total construction cost, total project costs that they have ranged from basically six million for using the existing footprint, um, eight point four, uh, for one of the, um, addition to the east. I'm trying to think which one that is. That's like towards.
That's the connection to the elementary.
Towards the elementary school. And then the, um, to the north would be the option three, that would be behind it.
That's the connection at the HVAC.
Yeah, that's the HVAC one, yeah. And that one was ten million.
For the building.
Yeah. Yep, to the back, so.
That is, uh, ten.
Ten right now with, for everything, total project cost. So, I don't know, you know, I know we, yeah, go ahead.
No, I, I think, you know, we've had a thorough look, a thorough presentation. We've had an opportunity to review the materials. And, uh, I, I think it, it's in the town's best interest for us to at least have, uh, a, a conversation about what level of support we're willing to give, uh, one or none of these projects. And, um, and, uh, so I, you know, we've had an opportunity to review, uh, the, the previous materials and the notes from the presentation. So, you know, are there any other questions, lingering questions, concerns, uh, comments, statements that you'd like to make?
I'm, I'm just curious, just to take a step back as if, like, do we think we're all on the same page that we think, whether it's at the fire station or someplace else, that a technical makerspace is something that's critical to the identity of this district kind of moving forward? Cause I think what we're proposing with this space, there are other options. Um, I think that this does, there's a compelling case to use this and we can discuss that with the town. But like if this, you know, if this falls through and, and it doesn't happen, um, you know, are we still committed to, cause I think it's, that's going to be vital in the future, especially with school choice, to be able to, we're not going to directly vocational schools, but we can offer a technical vocational, um, kind of curriculum that's better suited for, um, needs of employers now, like more high-end, more computer programming, automation, assembly, robotics, wiring, things of that nature. I think we can carve out like a little, uh, niche for ourselves in that, in that department. So like, I, I, I am interested personally in this and I do like to, would like to move forward on this. But I'm just curious and, and, you know, if you don't have any thoughts, that's, that's fine. But I would just curious if everyone is on, is kind of on that same page that some, some form of this, um, is, we see that as kind of being critical to, um, to, to our schools in the, in the near future, you know? Cause it's going to be a couple of years.
So the only, the only part I'd say is I think, uh, I mean, yes, we think that that's, those are critical skills and that's the way we're kind of moving. But I also, the caveat to that is I think we've already started doing some of that. I mean, I think we have a lot more hands-on, a lot more technical stuff, um, even now than we did a year and a half ago, you know? And so, you know, if you look at the, the room we have, you know, we have a large room that was built almost like as an art room in the elementary school that is set up as like a makerspace that really, for the things that elementary kids are going to need, they have there. You know, we're going to be, we could, or we could incorporate them into that space as it, as it stands. You know, at the high school with all the stuff that, that we've kind of infused in this building this year to support the first program. I mean, they basically fabricated that entire robot in this building and put it together with all students. So, you know, I think if you look at the, the capabilities of what we have in this building, um, it's come a long way in the last year or so. Um, and I think even the middle school, um, you know, we've added kind of in a couple of different locations of sort of like the project lead the way room and then like the STEM room, makerspace room. Um, but I still think there's plenty of room for expansion in that, um, in the technology wing down at the middle school that we could, we could build out in there.
Right.
So, I mean, so I guess, yes, I think it's, it's those type of, these type of spaces are going to be key moving forward.
Right.
And I, but I think we can, I think we can meet, I think we can meet the needs of our students in our existing space. But I do agree that like to go kind of next level, to really look at like.
Right.
Can we partner with colleges or offer early college programs? Could we ultimately maybe get a, maybe get a chapter seventy-four program, a vocational program that's running? That's, that's what I really saw the benefit of this space as being somewhere where you could, um, get it a little more standalone, a little more formalized and then, and also kind of look for different ways for, hopefully some sustainability for that would be, you know, if it does become a chapter seventy vocational program or Perkins program, you know, that we could tap into some additional, you know, Perkins funds or, or chapter seventy, chapter seventy-four money um, to help, uh, you know, maintain that and do those types of things, get the workforce grants, get those types of things. So, um, you know, I think, so it's, it's, for me, it's a tough one. Because I think the, I think the quote that made the paper one of the last times is sort of like, it's, it's like buying a, a luxury at the expense of, of necessities. And that's just, you know, I think we have the space within our buildings to focus and meet the needs of our kids in terms of preparing them. I think, could we do more with a bigger space? Yes, but we just got to be careful because we could also invest six million dollars. You know, we're sitting there talking about, we need a half million dollars for a roof. You know what I mean? Like six million dollars could go a long way and.
Right.
In making the, the middle school better if, if, particularly if we don't get invited into it, the MSBA and we need to start really taking the lead on major renovations in that building.
I, I agree. One thing to keep in mind though is that this, like, when we're talking about this space, we're really thinking of what the needs of the school is going to, the district's going to be in like three or four years. You know, that, cause that's probably how long it's going to take before something like that gets, uh, gets built. So in, I think if we, if we're lucky enough to start talking in a few years about a new middle school, I would imagine. I would imagine that when developing how we want the layout of that middle school to go, this would probably be, right?
You'd be building your second spaces in there.
So there's, you know, it's like, to me, I see what you're saying, because I'm, it's, we're either going to take a look at using the fire station to start building it now, or it's going to wait until the middle school gets built and we'll have something there.
Or renovated, or whatever.
Or renovated, yeah, but my only concern is that, it's just a little bit of an unknown with, like, it could be, it could be three, four years before we get a new middle school, it could be seven, eight years, so it's like, how, how long do you wanna delay this kind of next step that I think is kinda, I think it's critical to the district, like, moving forward, this, this type of, this type of a space. So I'm, I'm in the same boat, like, I understand, I do understand what you're, what you're saying, it's just...
Here's the only, here's the other thing I would just throw out there, though, that we gotta realize, is sort of a, a byproduct of this study, right, is if you look at, if we look at, say, like, page forty-six, option one, when you go through there, no matter what you use this building for, right, pretty much all of the costs, except where it says "technology program" and "STEM equipment," is probably gonna be the exact same, right? So, you take out that, what is that, four hundred thousand or so? So you're at, let's round it down a little bit, call it five and a half million.
Five and a half million, yeah.
For five and a half million, it's gonna be five and a half million to make that functional space, right? Because we're essentially just bringing it up to code, adding bathrooms, adding an elevator, all the things you need to have.
Right.
So, at some point, you know, whether it's, whether it's a STEM center, or whether it's gonna be an early childhood center, whether it's gonna be offices for, like, the superintendent and town hall, or whether it's gonna be, you know, whatever that use might be, right? The, we know now that basically the, the cost to bring that building back to life is gonna be in that ballpark of like, you know, five and a half million dollars. So, at some point, regardless of whether you like this idea or not...
Right.
The question needs to be asked, is it worth five and a half million dollars to bring that building back to life?
I, I totally agree, that's like the second part of this, it's like, this is, it's an asset that's under our control right now. This is for the first time, we have a price tag associated with what it takes to make that building usable again, and it's like, okay, so, we're kind of, we, we are at a little bit of a fork in the road with this, with this asset, because if we, if we all agree, maybe we do, that we don't wanna move forward with that, then the next path is like, you know, do we, do we relinquish our control back to the town? Do we try to sell it? Do we look at the price tag for demolition? You know, I mean, these are all other unknowns too, but I just think this, I mean, it's, it's good that, that we did this, it's good we're doing this. I'm still in favor of, of pursuing it, but I'm looking at it similar to what you're saying, cause I'm just saying, five and a half million to make the building usable, and taking that argument, like saying, bringing that to the, to the selectmen, to the finance committee, with the understanding that we know the condition of the middle school, that we're working on it now to, to make it good for the next couple of years, but that is kind of on our radar as possibly a new school in the next four or five years, or whatever it ends up being, but having that conversation with them upfront to see like, what their appetite is for being a part of something like this, cause we just don't know. Maybe we go and present it to them, and they say, you know what, wait until you build the new middle school, and try to get by with something now, and that's fine, but I think, I think we should at least take it to that level, to, to see what their opinion is of it, cause they might, maybe they'll be receptive of it, you know, you just, you don't know.
I should be on the agenda for the March twentieth, Mary, is it March twentieth? Selectment meeting? I believe so, right?
Two weeks here.
Thirteenth, yeah. So I should be on the agenda for the March twentieth selectmen meeting. The purpose of me being on that agenda for March twentieth was primarily to go over the statement of interest, to get them to vote to, cause they need to vote as well. You guys took that vote, authorizing us to go forward with the statement of interest. They need to vote as well, they vote, you know, we did it last year, I just kinda shared with them how that process works, they approved it, and, and we were good. So we need to get that done before the April, like, twelfth deadline, or whatever it is, so it's gonna go to the March twentieth meeting, and I think at that time, you know, that's something that, you know, when I'm talking about, when I'm discussing the statement of interest, you know, we're talking about the middle school and kinda moving forward there, but we could also share sort of some of these, and not even, we don't necessarily need a, a firm answer from them, but that could be at least an initial kind of like planting of a seed of, of sort of, this is the cost, here's kind of, here's kind of where we are, and, and understanding that I think, like we said before, it comes down to, it comes down to, at some point, at some point you gotta do something with that building.
Right.
You can't, it's just gonna sit there and, and decay, right, right next to, you know, right in between two other town buildings.
Right.
So, and I, and I promise you this, it's not gonna get cheaper, right? It's gonna be, so, the, you know, so I don't know, the, you know, I don't know, I don't, you know, I guess we gotta feel out their, their appetite for it.
Hold on one second. Do either of you wanna weigh in on this?
Yeah, and I, it seems like we're piecemeal on everything, you know, like I said, we addressed the fire station, which, to me, four, four million, nothing's ever underbudgeted, so five million dollars to make a building usable, seems a lot of dope. I mean, I get it, it's an old fire station, but it's not, it's not historic, you know, and if it means, and the thing about it is, if you, if you make it just livable, and like you said, if you, if there's certain offices, the town decides whether the school department, the town wants to put in there, that's fine, but you can't really rent it out to somebody, because it's right next door to your campus, and there's no parking, and, you know, there's certain restrictions on what you'd even want there. Then you, you're also talking about, you know, we want the state to look at the feasibility of making repairs to the middle school, and I know someone here, I don't know if it was Ed or Joe, said, hey, you know what, we're gonna start looking at building a new middle school, well, maybe we don't, maybe we start looking at that now, you know, like, hey, we don't, we wanna build this technology center if we, again, it's not gonna be the town meeting in June, but by next year's town meeting, we have a plan, you know, to say, whether, again, I'm not, say we need a new school, I know there's people in the community that think we should build a new high school, now, I'm just saying, a new school.
Well, the first step in that process would be a feasibility study, to figure out what the best thing would be.
Start getting it going, cause we keep saying it's gonna take, you know, I'm throwing out random numbers here, five years, well, if we waste another year, then it's six years. And, to me, I just think, and I know this is a great, was a great study and everything, but to take an old building and say it's gonna be five million just to make it, a new building, you know, I don't know, I'd hate to see it go to, I mean, it's been, what I think, what did I say today, thirty-five years, it's been pretty much used for different things.
Wow.
I know that Parks and Rec used it for a while, I think the school department grounds, Tommy Gavin, I think, used it for a while, so, it's, you know, I know years ago, there was talk, the old high schools there, that they were gonna move industrial arts over there, so there's been all these plans for it, but, you're right, it's gotta get any cheaper, but at this point, I could think of a lot of better things to do in the town with five million dollars.
Well, that's, I mean, when you start really thinking, like, how many projects could you do in the middle school with five million dollars, and what would that, what would that building look like if you invested it over there, you know?
Yeah, right, it's gonna keep going up, and you know...
So, so that's, you know, and I, and I think we could still achieve a lot of the same stuff in terms of, particularly for middle school students, in terms of how they're gonna access what we would put down here, we could replicate a lot of that by upgrading that, that technology wing in that, in the existing middle school. So I think, you know, it's tough, I mean, I think it's a, you know, honestly, I think it's a, it's a bigger price tag than I was hoping, and I thought that if it was more of like, you know, if we were more under the like, you know, three million range, and maybe we could cut some corners and keep it under three or something like that, then maybe we say, hey, you know, that this is definitely something we really wanna, you know, we really wanna try to throw our support behind. But, you know, I think we need to, you know, I, I think, I think in my, in my role, I need to make sure that we still look out for not doing anything at the expense of, of addressing the middle school, because I think it's, that's something that we need to, we need to do, but I'm also not, I'm also not advocating, that's the tough part here, I'm not advocating for just pumping five million into the middle school either, cause I don't think that's a wise investment. I think a wise investment is to try to go through the pipeline and get, you know, access to state funding for it, and, and do a comprehensive study and a major, yeah, so.
So I, on the, this drawing that they have on twelve, I know they mentioned digital media there, but I was wondering, because, I mean, my thoughts on the whole project is, this would be, it would be a wonderful thing to have, and it, and it would be, you know, it would be beneficial. I, I like the community aspect of bringing the community in, into it, but I'm wondering with this whole cable thing, and, like, what monies are available, cause I, if I remember right, I remember at one time, I thought the town had been talking about this building and maybe using it, cause I know, like, our, like, local access channel doesn't really have a home, really, and I wonder if it would be something that we would like partner with the town, which would cut this cost in half and make it more palatable to, to all parties, you know, and still come up with a attractive building, and, I mean, I, I do agree, when, when you start, when we start talking and we ask the direct question, can we do what we're doing in this building, and I think I just heard tonight, yes, we can. We have room at the elementary, we have room at the high school, and whatever happens at the middle school, if we don't have the room now, we can certainly plan for room later on, whatever happened there. I mean, unless it was a partnership with the town, I, I feel like it would be a little, a little hefty of a price to ask for.
And I think that's part of what we've just briefly missed, is that we, we haven't really talked about the, the other half of that, the fire station, which is supposed to be the community involvement as well. So, if we do build it here, that's, that's nice, and I'm sure there may be ways that the community could still access it, but there's a more, more restrictive, cause it's like in a school. If, I mean, the, so the other part of the benefit of that, of that workstation was that it was open to, it'd be primarily used by the schools, but would also be a, a job training center, a, a learning center for adults, and the fact that it's right down the street from the adult learning center, which is like bustling, like every, every night they have classes there, it's like crazy. Like, I walked through there for, like, at night, I, I couldn't believe before one of our meetings, it's like, every single classroom is like, is filled out, the parking lot is like filled. It's obviously a popular program, and to have something like this, that would be like right down the street, that now people could, you know, and people could use that for more of technical training, and businesses in town could leverage it, like, Knight Row would most likely be interested, you know, that would, that could probably be, the next step would be to reach out to some of the businesses in town and see like, what, I know Phil's probably done that a little bit, but, you know, that's, that's something we can do too, and, the only, so I agree with you about like, we have, we're good for now, we're talking about the future, and I, I know you've identified, and I, Russ brought it up too, the middle school kinda underutilized in that, that industrial wing that they have there, but then, to me, that kinda brings up a, I'm fine with doing that temporarily, but like, that's not really a long-term solution either, because that, that school is kind of on the radar for, I guess, what I'm making is, how much money do you wanna invest in the middle school to build it up if we have it on the radar to have a new school in like five or six years?
But I think if a lot of it is gonna be, the hope would be, you know, if we're gonna buy a sixty thousand dollar CNC router to put over there...
Yeah.
Well, if we, if, even if we do build a new school, you...
Oh, yeah, the equipment.
You pick up the router and you move it, you know what I mean? So a lot of the stuff that would go in there, you know, cause I think there is a lot of space in there, I think most of it is gonna be, you know, cleaning and, and, you know, a coat of paint, and just double checking the, you know, the wiring, and the, and it even has like dust collector systems and stuff that I know need a little love, but a lot of it is already kinda set up, you know, it was built as a shop, so I think it can, it can be, you know, wouldn't be, it wouldn't be like, you know, tons and tons of, cause I, and, and we, cause we all, even if we, even if we got invited into the MSBA for a building project in December, which would be the earliest we would get invited, basically, maybe end of November, early December, that's our next round, it's gonna be, you know, like a five-year process.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, we still owe all those kids that are going through that building for the next five or six years, like, a, a quality education. I mean, we can't just put everything on hold, because, you know, those kids don't get to do over fifth grade, you know?
Right, that, I'll just go ahead.
That's okay, I'm gonna weigh in, and I appreciate, I appreciate that perspective. You know, I, for me, so to the, to answer your first question, do I believe that STEM-related programming is essential to learners for the 21st century? Absolutely, I agree. For me, that the question of whether or not to support this initiative comes down to priorities, and I think that if, if, if there is a reasonable chance, and we were told by the MSBA that there is a, a highly reasonable chance that we can be invited into that program, I think that this is a potential backup plan, that if we're, if we're not able to move forward and something happened where the MSBA said, you know, we're, we're not going to invite you in at any point, you know, we have a thorough study to look at what this type of a facility might look like on one of the existing campuses, or within that building, but, but I'm not feeling at this point where I feel like I could support putting this ahead of, you know, where we might be with a statement of interest and, and an invitation to the MSBA. I do say, I do think it's important to, for, just for clarity's sake, that, because we've thrown around different ideas about we will build a new middle school, or we will rehab the middle school, and while that, that is the building where, you know, certainly the issues need to be addressed, I don't know that we've had, that's the purpose of the feasibility study, to determine what that might look like in the future.
Right.
And, you know, I just, for me, I, I think it, it comes down to a, to a question of, of priority. I think your point is a good one, I think the point is a good one, that, that if the, the town, the building's not going anywhere, so if, you know, if the town sees that vision as well, and we can, you know, work in some partnership, then, you know, as a community resource, which I agree would be invaluable, then, then, you know, I suppose we can revisit it, but, but in terms of us endorsing this plan as a school committee initiative, I just think that it's, the timing's unfortunate, and, and I can't support it.
And I do think it comes back to, though, thinking like what Ed brought up of the, the other side of it too, is that community aspect side, cause I know, you know, really, this, this grant originally to pay for the feasibility study was written really looking at that kind of community resource center, right?
Right.
So, you know, if that's really what it's gonna become, I think that's where it gets to the fact that, you know, as a, as a school, like, yeah, if you build it, we'll use it, and we'll make it, and we'll, we'll make sure that we, you know, we can take advantage of it, and we'll do all that stuff, but there needs to be some drive from the community side on that in terms of, or, you know, is, you know, I think that's in a, I forget what they're even called, like, the investment area, you know, like in town, like, I think that area, there's like, there's some different credits and stuff in there, there's the, you know, like you mentioned, could part of it be the cable studio space, and could we tap into a little bit of money from the cable fund to pay for the, the cable studio space, and if Knight Row sees it as a valuable investment, would, you know, so would there be corporate sponsors, basically, like, what, what are the other ways to, to look at it to maybe say, if this is truly gonna be a community resource, are there other things that we could piecemeal together, so that, yeah, it's a six million dollar project, but didn't cost the town six million dollars?
Right, and, I agree with you, but it's, I think it's tough for the community or the town to get excited about a project if we're not particularly excited about it.
Hmm.
You know what I mean? I, that's just, I, I agree, like, we, it's, yeah, if, if the town was willing to spearhead this thing and just build a building and kind of push it forward, like, yeah, we would use it, but I think this, it's kinda supposed to be collaborative, and I'm not saying anything that we're, it's, we're well with, we're not wrong if we don't wanna move forward on it, but I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's tough to, I think it's tough to ask the community and the town to get excited about it if, if we're reluctant about it, you know what I mean?
No.
That's, that's my only concern.
I guess, so I guess the only thing I'd say, though, is I think that what could happen is, you know, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't sat down with, you know, with Phil and gone through and said, Phil, what are all your ideas from, from your economic development, you know, with your economic development hat on, like, what, what grants have you thought of that might help pay for this? What programs might make it eligible for some, you know, state investment, no financing, or, you know, no interest financing or something? You know, like, what, what other programs might there be that he's aware of, that he thinks that this, this feeds into? Because I do think a lot of this sort of was sticker shock too, and I think that if, if it came down to, you know, if we really started looking at this and said, hey, you know what, if, with this program, and this program, and this cable station, and this whatever, like, we might be able to get it to a palatable number where it was exciting.
Right.
It was saying, like, yes, for that money, like, we should do this, you know?
Yeah, because there's, there's obviously gonna be some interest there, cause Phil's interested in it, so there has to be something.
Right.
And I, I guess I just wish, I guess, for lack of a better term, I wish somebody else would tell us not to do it, as opposed to like, as opposed to like, us deciding, like, no, I mean that honestly, like, I wish, like, we would kind of, on the same page-
Don't print that, Jim.
Present it to, present it to the selectmen, present it to the selectmen and to the finance committee, and honestly, like, they might, they might tell us, you know what, we just don't think this is in the best interest, and then that's, that's all we can do.
I don't think anyone's opposed to it in the abstract. I don't think anyone's opposed to the idea of the potential of, of what this could mean to the school district and to the town, but, you know, we're, I don't think we're being asked to weigh in on it in the abstract. I think, you know, what you're asking is, what we're asking is, do we want to move forward with the commitment as it's laid out? And I don't think this, the, the school department should, you know, should, should be, I don't think it's prudent for us to bear that alone.
Well, yeah, I, I don't, I, I don't think we're, let's say, misunderstanding, I don't think we're being asked to bear it alone, I think it's, it's intended to be a collaborative endeavor.
The only thing, and outside that is, I know we keep talking about town money and school money, but other than this grants, which, nobody knows what they, what they exist or what they are, it's the same money.
Right.
You know, so, no, I just want to clarify, no, you're laughing at me, I just came to this, this came to me in a dream. No, but, no, but we want to say, we want the town to weigh in and the school to weigh in, even though I hear what you're saying, you want us to get behind it, if it's $6 million, and there's, let's just say if the sacred, if there aren't any grants, the taxpayers and Clinton gotta come up with $6 million.
Right.
And to Joel's point, and is, and I agree, is, we gotta prioritize it, and that's, like I said, if, you know, if everything was, you know, great for a day, and we had all this money, I like this project, but with the thing incident, what you have the slide there, a million dollars just to, just for, for this year, you know, I could spend, I know, we could spend, that's $6 million on, you know, throughout the facilities and all the other maintenance gonna do, plus, like I say, a school, and it was a middle school, and we spoke earlier, a school that we may need down the road, that would be my, my priority, to hit, to ask the taxpayers for, I don't even know what that amount would be, and I have no idea.
I guess it comes back to this, to my original point, that I think that, my quote I had last week or whatever, but it's like, I think you could do, like, this building could allow us to do some amazing stuff, but in the context of one kind of pool of money, you know, there's, there's probably a whole lot of other things that we could do that are gonna have more of like a day-to-day impact on students' lives than, you know, with the frequency that they're gonna be able to all access this, this location. So, you know, I think, you know, I don't, we can, you know, I don't think we need to, I mean, you, obviously, you guys can determine what you want to do at this point, I don't think we need to, you know, vote to say we're in support of this or not in support of it right now, but I do think, I do think a next reasonable step would be, you know, to start, like, if I'm gonna talk about the statement of interest to the selectmen, we kind of throw this out there, let them know, and just sort of see, you know-
What their interest is.
What their appetite is.
I agree.
And that's on March 20th, you said?
March 20th, yeah.
Do you have an idea of what their level of understanding might be in this?
I know, I know we went and talked, I know Phil and I went and talked to them when we did the initial, like, grant application, I don't know, I really haven't talked to them much since the, since the initial grant application, I don't know if Phil has been keeping them updated, or if they've received copies of this or anything like that, but, you know, I just think, it comes back to, I think it comes back to a lot of everything that we've been trying to do, is, is we just want to be transparent about everything, and we basically want to say, like, you know, one of the things I think I, I heard from people when I, when I came into this role was, what's going on with that fire station, right? It just sits there, and no one's done anything with it for a long, long time. So, we, we found a way to pursue some sort of option, and, you know, now we need to, at least to get some, some parameters around that, right? And now I think it's almost, you know, we need to go and say, okay, we looked at it, and this is what it's gonna cost to make this a usable building, but understand, we have other needs too. So unless we think we can stomach all of this, this is the stuff I might take off the plate first.
And in fairness, when, you know, when that was put on the table in terms of what we might do with that building, we also weren't, you know, we weren't as encouraged at the, at that point from MSBA that, you know, reapplying again, you know, might work in our favor.
Right. So I guess, I don't even know why, I mean, so what's the purpose then, at this point of bringing it up to the town or to the selectmen at that meeting? Because I feel like if, depending on who's there and who they ask, if they say, well, do you think it's a good idea, there's some people that might say, ah, you know, I don't think right now it's really the best idea, so like, how can we, you know, if we're gonna gauge their interest and we don't really have that much interest in it, like, what are we, I mean, maybe we're-
Well, I, I think we should present it in, in the fact that we, we are all behind the whole, the whole STEM or STEAM, whatever it ends up being, center, and, you know, it's something that's definitely, that we are definitely interested in it, but I think it will, would also show them and open up a discussion about what the future may hold as far as a new school goes, some type that we're thinking financially and being responsible, that, you know, this would be a great thing to have, but with what we know may be coming up in the next few years, we feel like, you know, we have to have a priority.
And I think it goes back to that, the other, you know, the primary question that, that I think started bleeding to some of the stuff, you know, exploring this and doing the studies is, well, if not this, then what for that building?
Right.
You know, and I think that's part of, even if we're just sharing the information that, listen, we got our feasibility study, and they think, yeah, they think the space would work for this, these are the price tags, you know, and, and kind of go from there, because, you know, I don't know, I don't know how passionately people in the, in the community feel in terms of, you know, a lot of people say that's a beautiful building, and they, you know, they don't ever want to see it go, and they want to see as much of it preserved as possible, and, and I'm sure there's other people in town that would say, you know, hey, we need more parking, and for a lot cheaper than that, you could add 12 parking spots or something like that, so, you know, I don't, you know, so I think that that's-
Or something in between.
Yeah, but that's, but that's the, you know, I think that, that's what, that's the only thing I think would be to, the point of sharing it would be to say, basically, you know, I think there's still a lot of unknowns before we're just coming here and saying, you know, whatever political capital we have, we're throwing right behind this idea, because we need to be a little bit conservative right now until we figure out the direction of, of some of our other obligations. But I think that, you know, getting that information out there to start seeing, like, what are, what is it, what are the, what is the appetite for the, for the community, and what, what are the, you know, does the, does the finance committee say, you know, hey, there's, there's a couple debt exclusions coming off this year, and you know what, we could do this project, and I know $6 million sounds like a lot, but if we did a debt exclusion, your taxes would still go down, and we'd get it done, you know, and, okay, that's fine, but just remember, we might need another debt exclusion in like, five years, you know? So that's, so those are just the, you know, so I don't know, I mean, I think it doesn't hurt to, to share it, and I think, you know, we could, we could talk to Phil too, and we could have Phil there to share it from the community perspective as well.
Right, I mean, if, if, if we did, if we did use the fire station, then we wouldn't have that maker space in the new, when we, when we started talking about the next new school, that, then that new technical maker space would not be in that new school, so it's just, it would just be a matter of, like, when, either, if we don't do it at the fire station, and at some point we get, we are discussing a new school, we'll be advocating to make the space in the new, in the new school spot, so it's just a matter of, if we build it now, we're just not gonna ask for it in the new school in the future. I mean-
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that they're mutually exclusive, you know, I think that if we, like, if we're gonna build a new school, we're gonna want to build it to, if that was what the, the study came, you know, we're gonna want, we're gonna want to try to build it to the, to the most current, current standards, you know what I mean?
No, 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 yeah, but I mean, if, if we, if we build a technical maker space at the fire station, say hypothetically, and then in a couple of years, we're working on the plans for a new middle school.
Right.
I'm saying that the, the footprint for a technical maker space will be less, if not needed, at the new school, because we already invested, and we have one at the fire station.
Right, but I think, but it might change some of the scope, but we're still gonna want to make sure that, you know, because there are still logistics that we have to work out, you know what I mean? Like, even if we have one at the fire station, I gotta get, I gotta get middle school, middle school kids down there. You know, it's not like they, you know, elementary kids could walk, high school kids, a lot of them might be able to drive, particularly if it's more of a career path program where they're going as juniors or seniors, to get elementary school kids down there, or middle school kids down there, is gonna require, it's gonna require transportation, it's gonna, you know, it's not something where every kid is gonna be able to access that space, like, every single day for a 45-minute class, or a 90-minute class even, where if you have the opportunity to renovate and design something that's right there, that's getting paid for, you know, 68 or 70% is getting paid for by the state, then I think you would try to put, you know, whatever you could, whatever you could put in there. Doesn't mean they won't, you know, they might, doesn't mean they'll never access the other one if the other one is there, but logistically, it's gonna be a whole lot easier for them to integrate into that space if it's in their building.
No, just, all right, it just sounded like the argument was being made that shouldn't make it now, because if we do build a new school, we're gonna have one there anyway, and I guess I was just saying, if we did build it now, the needs for that probably wouldn't be as-
I think in my mind, I see it a little bit differently, because I think if we're talking primarily that our statement of interest is around the middle school. You know, I think if we build, I, I, I believe that the best benefit of that, of the fire station, if we renovate it, is gonna be for the high school, for looking at, like I said, potential vocational programming, early college type programming, career training, those pathways, that kind of stuff, and then for the, and then transitioning into the Adult Learning Center and the community as a whole. I think those are gonna be the primary users of that, because no matter what, they're still gonna be, you know, if you get something too technical, right, there's, fifth graders aren't really gonna be using it directly anyway, you know? You know, even us trying to, even like, some of the 3D printing and stuff that we're doing right now in the, in the younger grades, it's like, you kind of have to have a little more of a intermediate in there, so as they're kind of designing it, before you end up just, you know, end up with a giant filament mess, you need to make sure that you, you know, you kind of have some, some supervision going on, so, so I don't, you know, it's, I think, I think the biggest thing would be, you know, I think sharing, we have this information, right, and it's gonna, we're talking about it on a public meeting, like, I think sharing it with the selectmen is, is a good thing to do. I also think continuing to have conversations with Phil and even Russ about, you know, where does this fit in in terms of the needs of the town, in terms of, you know, Russ from a facility standpoint, where does this fit in in terms of the other things, Phil from a economic development thing, like, how, how do we really feel that this could play out as that community center, and what other resources might be able to support that?
Okay, I, I think if we're not kind of excited about it, we should start talking about unloading it. I'm serious, that, I mean, that's, we're, it's kind of, we're kind of at a fork in the road, so-
I'm gonna end the discussion just now, at this point, I think, yeah, no. I think, you know, let's see where we are, you know, when we talk about our statement of interest, and then we can bring that information back to the committee.
And then, but we're not, we don't have another meeting before the Board of Selectmen meeting on March 20th, so are we directing Dr. Meyer to, just informational purposes, show this to the selectmen and just say, it's a wish, wish ID, wish list item for us, but-
Unless someone would like to make a motion to accept the proposal and move forward with it, to, to, you know, it's, as Mr. Bailey said, we're not empowered to print the money and, and fund it, so I think, you know, my comments haven't been, I haven't changed my opinion, I think it's a great project, I think the project is just, I can't support it fully, because it comes down to a question of priorities.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if the, if the committee is comfortable with it, I mean, I think what I'd like to say is that we're still have, we're still having ongoing discussions about it, and I think that there's still some, some discussions that need to be had, and I said, and it includes, it includes, you know, like I said, it includes Phil, it includes Russ, it includes our committee, it'll include the FINCOM, it includes the selectmen, I mean, I think just, you know, looking at it, but I also think, I mean, the report, the report exists, so I think it's, it's, you know, naive to think that even if I show up there asking them to approve a statement of interest, for us to put in a statement of interest, there's not even gonna be a question about-
Sure.
You know, hey, where's, where's that fire station thing stand, you know what I mean? So, but I think, I think it would be more informational purposes at this point.
Yes, yeah, that's-
To say, like, we received the feasibility study, they presented three options, yeah. All right?
Anyone want a final word? Do you have anything else under your report?
No, I think I'm good.
All right, we have a curriculum committee meeting coming up on, tell me the date again?
13th.
13th, that is, this Wednesday.
Yep. Safety, we don't have one scheduled yet, but I think we will be scheduling it soon, I was looking at those notes the other day to try to see if we had, we picked another date, and I don't think we had, so I'll try to get one set soon, because we should probably look at coordinating, like, the, some spring drills and those types of things.
Do we have anything, do we have a date or anything from marketing?
No, nothing in report.
Anything from district environment?
We've almost got the survey, I think, pretty much finalized, I'm gonna start working now on just trying to get, make sure it's translated accurately, and then hopefully we'll be able to start making some headway with getting that out in the next week or so, so.
Is there a need for the policy subcommittee to meet anytime soon?
Let me take, let me take a look at it and just see, I don't, I don't think we've gotten any, I don't think we've gotten any major, like, advisories from them recently, which is usually what kind of triggers, like, oh, yeah, we should be doing this, but I can, I can double check, just make sure we didn't miss anything, and, and we can maybe look at some of the ones we had, you know, on the docket to look at, so.
Anything under old business?
Steve, can you, can we try to get on the agenda the next couple of meetings, we had talked about trying to put together like a asset organization plan for like, like in the, the middle school and some of the other schools, that had like a lot of desks and tables and chairs and stuff like that, I know, yeah.
Thanks for bringing that up.
I know Russ mentioned that early in our walkthrough, and I think, I thought about it again, because I know we're trying to schedule our second round of walkthroughs, and I just know that's, it's gonna come up again, so we, we have to, we gotta get a plan together.
Yep.
So, and if so, maybe the policy subcommittee does need to meet, trying to clarify-
Yeah, we gotta double see, double check on that, because I think the thing we ran into last time was when we ran into the town bylaws, so we gotta, we gotta think about that, and I don't know if that's something that, you know, the, clearly in the bylaws, it's very, very, you know, it's like an original bylaw or something, because it's like anything over like $5, you need, you know, five layers of approval to get rid of or something like that, it's not that low, it's maybe 500, but the, you know, it's much lower than I've, than I've seen, but we could also review it and look at what the, even if we don't, even if there's not gonna be a change to the bylaws, what the, what that process actually entails, because what we would need to do typically, you might, you know, like I said, we would have to post them, which now with, you know, electronic ways to do that, we could post them and try to see what we could, what we could sell prior to just getting rid of certain things, if anyone wanted to purchase it, so, maybe that is something we could look at with the, with the policy subcommittee, though.
Okay. Anything else under old business?
Yeah, I got something, when Mr. Van Assen, I don't, I'm trying to remember, we were talking earlier, was last meeting or the meeting before, when Dave was in here and he was talking, I don't know if this was more to Karen or Steve, because he was talking about the, you know, now, now he's in, he's what, 19 grand in the hole, or some, some on that odd number, but in the past, he had, he had money in his revolving account. Now, I know he's coming, him and Nannock and yourself are coming up with something, going forward to prevent, you know, to try to prevent going back in the hole again, but in the past, I'm talking, you know, not recently, like in the last year or two, but maybe three or five years ago, when he had money in there, was, and was that used in the fourth quarter to move to another line item to pay another bill?
No, he just, like, he had money in his bank account that he was borrowing off of.
But it was kept in the, just in the food services then, right?
Yeah.
Okay, no, because I didn't know-
Yeah, no, we can't cross over between the food services.
Okay, because I didn't know, it just seemed like it went, you know, from, to a surplus to, you know, owing 19 grand. a surplus to, to, you know, owing nineteen grand in a, in a hurry.
Yeah.
I didn't know, and I was gonna ask you the last time, I, I don't know why, totally forgotten.
I think it was because, um, he's probably been drawing off that money that he had built up over the years-
Over the years, okay.
And now it just got to the point where he can't take it from there anymore, because it's all gone.
Okay, so it's-
So, each year, I don't know, it doesn't appear that he had those huge deficits each year, but he might have been, you know, having-
And it just slowly, okay.
Yeah.
There, there are a few, um, there are a few kinda quirks with his department, which is, um, like, the, all, all the benefits for the cafeteria workers are paid out of his, um, his revolving account, so it truly is, you know, a, a self-sustaining program. Um, that's not always the case in a lot of other, um, lunch programs, those benefits may, maybe are absorbed by the town or the district and kind of their benefits line item. Um, I don't know if that's something that's always just been, I don't know if they just kinda started because-
Because he had that money.
-he could, [laughing] and, and now that, you know, it's, it's making it a little more, more difficult. Um, so I think that's, and then obviously, we know that the, the, uh, insurance rates and those things have, have gone, you know, way, way up in recent years, so.
How are you gonna make up, not you, but how are you gonna find twenty greens?
Yeah.
It's a lot of, a lot of money, I didn't-
So, you okay with that?
Yeah.
It's on the agenda the next-
No, actually, I know the snacks are back, because my son is happy, so.
Oh, good.
He's trying to generate revenue.
Anything else under old business? Anything under new business?
Um, the all-school play-
Please.
For Clintville School is March twenty-second and twenty-third, High School Musical Junior. All welcome to attend. Five dollars. We're very excited to have-
Please, please wish the cast good luck for us, from us.
So, we did have one quick thing to review in an executive session, so.
Oh, no, I don't.